Good evening, this is The Point of View, we're live on City TV. This is the Heritage Month and we're bringing you special programmes throughout the month of March. It's a live interactive show that airs on City TV and also on Facebook at City TV GH. On The Point of View, we get the right guests, we ask them the right relevant questions and we come up with some useful insights. Don't forget our hashtag is The Point of View. I have a great show for you tonight, when we come back I'll tell you who my guests are. Stay with us. So tonight is very simple, we're trying to review the work of the Commission of Inquiry into the Ayawoso West Wagon by-election. By-election held on 31st January. Very shocking videos emerged a couple of days after showing what a lot of people consider to be thuggery. One way that has become quite common in the nomenclature of media in Ghana is vigilantism. So why was the Commission of Inquiry set up? What did they seek to do? Who did they feature in their 12 days? And what possibly could they do with the report that they will file very soon? I have a very exciting panel. So sat very far from me is legal practitioner, who is a private legal practitioner and law lecturer, Justice Remsai. Justice, great to have you on The Point of View. This is your first time here?
Yeah, this is my first time.
We hope it becomes the first of many.
Sure.
Great, you've been on City TV but this is your first time on my show, so I'm happy to have you. I'm also privileged to have the President of the Institute of Security and Emergency Studies in the person of Ishmael Norman. Great to have you on the show, sir.
Thank you.
And then we have the Head of Communications or PRO of the Commission of Inquiry in the person of Catherine Loyes Wood. Great to have you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Super. So we have quite a number of reports we filed throughout the process of the Commission's work. Here is a quick interview that the Executive Secretary of the Commission, Dr Kofi Abuchi, gave to our reporters after Friday's final public hearing.
The Commission will take the order into account in making our recommendations to the President in terms of our findings. So in all, I would just like to thank all of you. Thank the President for setting up this Commission as we conclude our work and as we present our report to him. And then thank the Ghanaian public, who have also been with the Commission throughout the proceedings. So we assure you that we're going to carefully, the Commission is going to, the Commissioners are going to carefully review and evaluate every evidence he has received. Every evidence will be looked at very carefully, in a balanced way. The testimony that has been presented before the Commission will be carefully reviewed and the reports that will be presented to the President will reflect in a balanced way the evidence that has been led. So nothing is going to be compromised on. And I can assure anybody who's a skeptic that this Commission is going to deliver a report that reflects the facts and evidence presented before it.
So that was Dr Kofi Abuchi speaking to the media on Friday after the final day of public hearing. So it was 12 days of public hearing. So let me start with the PRO for the Commission of Inquiry, Catherine Loyes Wood. Give me a sense of your timelines. When you started, how long you worked and how did that whole thing? Just give us a sense of context.
Right, thank you very much. And you know, it's been such a quick time. You know how we all feel about the month of February. So if you look at 6th of February, it's a Wednesday. The CI, which is the constitutional instrument based on the Act, is set up, CI 111. The next thing we know, it's Friday and that's when our Commissioners were all sworn in by His Excellency the Vice President. Then you hop across a weekend and on Monday, the Commission starts from literally zero. No staff, no office, no furniture, no equipment, no policies, nothing. No letters written, nothing, no letterheads. And they have to move, literally with the speed of light, to be able to get it going. Call for inquiries to come in, set up a secretariat, have the staff, have the team of lawyers. And that goes on until 10 o'clock on Thursday, which is the 14th, when it just starts. Starts with Ministers and then straight through to the, you know, the head of the Electoral Commission and it just keeps going straight on.
So you were, they were sworn in on February 7th?
February 8th.
February 8th?
Yes.
And less than a week after, they started work?
Oh no, by all means, they were sworn in on a Friday and, you know, 10 o'clock on Thursday morning. So they had Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday to set the whole thing up.
So did they have a...
And the clock is ticking.
Did they have a secretariat?
Nothing, it was zero. It was just like, right, here are our three Commissioners, one Chairman, two fellow Commissioners, as we all know, we will be discussing them, and the Executive Secretary, four members. That's all he had.
So there was no back office?
No, that's all he had and he was like, right, there you go, get going. It's up to you to set your own, to set your own Commission up, set your own secretariat up. We'll give you an office, which thankfully we received, and that was it. From then, it was all systems go.
So how did they arrive at who to invite? Whose decision was it? Was it Executive Secretary or the Commissioners?
No, you know that obviously that belongs to them. Investigations would have to have been going on already. They would have had to use every ounce of their skill and expertise to decide what direction this is going. There's a methodology about how a Commission of Inquiry is obviously, and they would follow through on the mandate, you know. I've got, who are the people, what's happening, where are the victims, where are the people, where are the witnesses, who's subject matter experts, who was on ground, you know, they go through that. So they've got to sit deliberate, get it going, write the letters, call, wait for people to come in and start.
So what were they trying to find out generally?
Based on the CI. So as you can, you know, well imagine, it starts, you know, when, when you literally don't know what you're going to do, the first thing you do is you follow some policy, which is the best thing in the world. Policies lead to procedures, lead to, you know, the way that proceedings should go. So basically, they started from there.
So can you remind us of what the CI said? Is that very clear?
You must agree with me. I mean, it's so, it's so, it's stated right there. So it starts from the Act of our 1992 Constitution and it goes from there and it says the President will be satisfied that a Commission of Inquiry should be appointed. So the CI, which is the instrument, 111 is based on that. And then it goes on and the Commission appointees go on to say that, who will be the members be? Fine, that's all done. The next thing we know is that the mandate is given. If you look carefully at the mandate, make a full, make a faithful and make an impartial inquiry into the circumstances as well as the facts leading to, not just the violence, but any associated violence that occurred on the day at the locus quo or the site.
So that means that in setting up the CI, there's an admission that there was violence? And that we are investigating the circumstances around the violence?
Absolutely. The name of the Commission is the Commission of Inquiry to the Ayawoso West Wagon by-election events.
Events.
Events and any associated...
So make a full, faithful and impartial inquiry into the circumstances and establish the facts leading to the events associated with the violence on the day. That's one.
So the inquiry is public concern, you know, there was, there is quite clear, you know, there was...
So that was the first terms of reference. What else was there in the terms of reference?
Identify any person responsible, you know, who has been involved in the events. So that's another remit, which is capped. You get me. And then inquire into the matter. You know, I love these CI's because they're very clear in what they do and, you know, they, they're good with autonomy, they're good with the fact that, oh, my dear Commissioners, you have that, you know, ability to manoeuvre within, you can summons, you've got the rights of the High Court, but at the end of the day...
So the third point of reference was inquire into any matter they would consider important in the circumstances.
Reasonably related to the cause of events.
So they could sort of define for themselves what they thought was, they were not limited by the terms of reference in terms of the letter of it?
Yes.
That's the third point.
The letter's pretty clear, it's about the violence. In other words, your deviation and your margins of error, you know, need to be carefully considered in that respect.
And then were they given a timeline within which to work?
Oh definitely, that's CI 4, that's the, you know, literally clause 3D.
Which says?
Submit within one month.
Within one month?
Of inauguration.
Of inauguration. They were inaugurated on the...
That's what I'm saying, on the 6th.
On the 6th.
Well, they're inaugurated on the 8th, hopefully.
So they were supposed to have finished by 8th March and they did finish on 8th March, within time. They had 12 sitting days.
There were 12 sitting days, lots of, well, we'd had our lovely, wonderful 62nd Independence anniversary in between there and one of the days we were out there at the locus quo itself, at the site right there, you know. So there was, and there were lots of weekends.
So before we go into the way they worked, let me just ask my other guests, before I come to Dr Norman, let's come to the lawyer. Was this properly set up based on the CI and what they said they should do? From a legal perspective, what do you think?
Yeah, from a legal perspective, I believe strongly that the CI was properly, you know, passed and the Commission was properly set up. There was this debate from the beginning, questioning whether a CI could be, you know, could be valid without being laid in Parliament for 21 days. And I remember granting interview to your guys and I made it clear that it was a misconception to suggest that a CI of this nature be laid before Parliament for 21 days.
Okay.
Because if you look at this CI carefully, it is not making any new law.
Okay.
It is basically a paraphrase, if I may put it that way, of what is already in chapter 23 of the Constitution. And we know that for a CI to be taken to Parliament for 21, it should be making a new law. But this is executing an already existing law. Therefore, that requirement, you know, was not necessary. And therefore, from my professional point of view, I believe strongly that it was properly set up and I think those who disagreed have now come to the understanding that it is not questionable whether or not a CI...
Were the terms of reference clear to you?
Yes, so if you take every CI, I mean CI of this nature, Commission of Inquiry instrument, what you look out for, you look out for the general, you know, terms and the specific terms. The general terms are usually, sorry, the specific terms and the incidental terms. The specific terms, if you take this CI, are that you should find, establish the facts and the circumstances that led to the violence. So that's very specific. The other specific function is to find persons responsible or associated with the violence. So these are the two specific, you know, specific terms. If you come to the incidental terms, so if you look at, I think, paragraph 3, the third one, it says you should also find out facts or events that are reasonably connected or associated with this. That is the incidental, you know, event. Now, when you put these, these functions together, you realise that the Commission must primarily deal with the first two, which is the facts leading to the event and also the persons responsible for the violence.
So those are the core?
The core ones.
Okay.
And then the incidental one, which to my surprise turned out to be the main, when you follow the proceedings, it appears vigilantism became almost more than 50% of the questions that were asked. And I think the vigilantism should be the incidental, but it turned out to be, you know, because if you look at the functions...
Because the terms of reference did not mention the word vigilante.
At all.
It spoke about violence...
Violence and persons who are responsible.
During the by-election and persons, yet over 50% of the testimony was about vigilantism.
Yes, in fact, generally, you were there.
Yes.
And the questions asked, apart from the immediate fact that your guys, your cameramen, most of the questions that were asked were about...
Actually, it wasn't asked much, I was just asked what work I do.
Yeah.
And then they asked me how we covered the election and then I said it and they asked me what I brought and I gave it to them and I walked them through it. So I didn't have the privilege of answering any questions.
Okay, and then...
Outside of, so I was dealing with core matters.
Yes, yeah, core matters. And then the other journalists who came, you know, some of them were entirely on, you know, vigilantism.
Incidental, which you consider...
So it is one of the things that I was even discussing with some of my colleagues.
Yeah.
That the recommendations, how is it going to be? Because it looks like the whole country is talking about vigilantism. The Commission did a lot of inquiry into vigilantism and so are we going to have the incidental rather take the front?
That's an interesting point.
Or the, you know, the specific take the front?
Let me ask Dr Norman your general views, how were you thought this was set up and whether you agree with the view that we sort of dwelt more on the incidental than on the core purpose for which the Commission of Inquiry was set up?
I think the Commission itself cannot be questioned in terms of its legality, right. What probably people had issues with is how it was run, how it was managed on the stage. There were times that I think they ran away from their purpose and certain statements and alterations were made from the panel themselves that encouraged focus on vigilantism, which shouldn't have been. But with the exuberance of the moment, with the passions that are associated with the issue of vigilantism, I think it is understandable to make allowances for the excesses of the Commission.
Okay.
That is what I would say for now.
So it is understandable, the focus on vigilantism? It is understandable?
Yes, because they were looking into violence and the violence had its etiology in vigilantism.
Okay.
So you cannot look at violence as an entity without looking at the very root of that violence and the very root of that violent act was vigilantism. Party vigilantism.
Brilliant. Let's talk about the people who were invited and whether the, madam can tell us a bit about why they were invited? Because as you said, you started with the Ministers, Minister of Interior, if you just walk through this, what was the thinking process of the Commission as to who to invite? Because I found myself also there, even though I wasn't, I wasn't anywhere close to the violence. So just give us an idea of who was invited and some of the thinking around why they were invited briefly.
No, you're absolutely right, you were there and you clearly stated that you were there at the Commission, you clearly stated you were not there on the site on the day, but you were the supervisor. And so clearly in our little, in our little dossier, you were there as media. There were victims, there were witnesses, there were subject matter experts, there was, there was the press, you know, of course, which is the media. You know, we, we, we had about 33 people.
Okay.
12 sittings, as you said, over 65 hours in total. I can imagine the pages and pages of transcripts, because everything has to be transcribed, everything, word for word, you know. So definitely, as the records show, we began with the three honours, who are Minister of Interior, Minister of National Security, Minister of State, you know, that's Honourable Brian Achampong. We had Madame Jean Mensah, she came in and then we started looking at the police and I remember...
A lot of police people came through.
A lot of them, because, you know, we've got district, we've got investigators, we've got commanders, we've got commander of the SWAT, we've got East Legon versus Legon, you know, we've got regionals. And that is where you understand the hierarchy of the service, you know, the police service.
So you had the Director of Operations, you had the Division Commander for East Legon and then you had the SWAT and then the airport divisional commander, who were all around the area.
They were all there, you know, so some, some people were right there on the ground, some people heard it in the command room, as you know. And then it was kind of getting zeroed in. And then obviously we had some of the party representatives, so the General Secretary, Mr Motala Mohammed of the PPP came in and then we obviously had a few radio stations or media houses, I'd like to upgrade, you know, you. And obviously we had one PC, which is a parliamentary candidate. Obviously, we all know that was, there was activity centred around his own home.
But you didn't invite the MPP candidate?
Let's perhaps set the record straight and look at it from the aspect of the fact that the Commissioners will begin and they themselves, as you would agree with me, probably have an idea where they are going, but they need to stare, they need to use it. She actually was with us one of the days and...
As a material witness?
That's the question, that's the question.
When you said she was with you, I said she came to the Commission. Was she written to?
Absolutely.
To come and testify?
Well, the word testify would be probably, we need to look at that again.
So what was she written to to come and do?
No, 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 the aspect of the fact that people call in and the, almost like a funnel effect, okay? It's like a basket at the beginning and you shake. And there was a point at which it was agreed by the Commissioners in consultation, you know, that actually I wasn't there. I know it's regarding, I know it's regarding the elections, the by-elections in which I was a candidate, but I wasn't there.
You mean she wasn't within the precincts?
She wasn't on the grounds and she is aware and she has said so. And my Executive Secretary did speak to the media about it.
Why didn't you find out that from her while she was as a witness? I mean, my question, how did you, because I wasn't there, Paula Demoschi wasn't there, Mas Mensah wasn't there, we were all invited and here is a parliamentary candidate who won the election and the Commission didn't think it was necessary to invite her?
I wouldn't say that we didn't think it was necessary. I will state again that if the records would show, there was, there was consultation. And if, if we look at it carefully, you then need to, like my colleague here on the left said, look, we, we need to then begin to find out where the relevance is. We do. And so it's navigating towards relevance. So let's put it this way, we call in Madame and we look at the situation, actually I wasn't there, like you, I wasn't there, but I had supervision, I have evidence, you get me? And so at the end of the day, you know, everybody tries to zero in on what's actually necessary.
Guy, what do you think of that? I find a bit odd, what do you think, Justice?
And I think the Commission, you know, the Commission of Inquiry is supposed to make a full inquiry.
Yeah.
And the inquiry is supposed to be faithful. Now, full means that full, everything must be known. I am not in any way suggesting that we need to know every single thing, but we need to know some material things. How do we know those things that are material? We need to look at the terms of reference of the Commission. It is possible that a violence could cause an election to be irregular and therefore nullified. So this is a recommendation that the Commission could make. The Commission could also make a recommendation that Mr A is responsible for this violence, therefore Mr A should be punished accordingly. These are all possible, I mean, recommendations that the Commission could make. Now, let's assume that the Commission makes a finding that the violence was said that it took away from the legitimacy of the election and therefore the election should be nullified. Could the Commission make that recommendation without speaking with a candidate, you know, in particular the candidate who won the election? So from the Commission actually dispensing with that candidate, I get the impression that the Commission has already decided that our recommendation is not going to go to the extent of what? Nullifying the election. That is one. Two, the Commission also did not allow counsel for some of the, you know, persons who came witnesses to cross-examine previous witnesses who made, I mean, allegations against them. Those allegations, even though the Commission itself found it necessary to cross-examine the subsequent witnesses in respect of the earlier witnesses' testimony of allegation, they did not make it possible for those subsequent witnesses to cross-examine the persons who accused them. Now the question is, are you going, and Dr Yina asked that question when it was disallowed, that am I getting the impression that my clients, who are witnesses, could not be found liable or responsible for any violence? The Commission did not give an express answer, but the reason why he asked that question was because you cannot tell me I'm responsible based on the allegation of someone, my accuser, without giving me an opportunity to speak or cross-examine that person. So again, I get the impression that those persons who asked to be, to try to be allowed to cross-examine were disallowed, could not also be, you know, responsible, found responsible. Now, you may go ahead and find them responsible, but the question is they will go to court and question that they are right to a fair hearing.
We'll come to the issue of what we can do with the inquiry, but Dr Norman, quickly, did you think, based on the list we've had, and we didn't run through the list, whether the right people were invited? You know, we had 33 people. Do you think we got the right people to appear before this Commission?
I think the Commission made the right decision by not inviting the candidate from, from the MPP side, because the violence wasn't perpetrated by her. It didn't animate from her team, it came from a different source and so she was not related to the violence, even though she could have been the beneficiary of the, of the violence. So to bring her in is to create a connection that somehow she was tangentially responsible for the violence. And that is why the Commission decided.
But how can you know without talking? You see, so... Because, because why would the Commission have a predetermined? It's very clear, you are supposed to make a full and faithful impartial inquiry...
Sure.
...into the circumstances that led to the violence, establish the facts, identify persons responsible.
Leading to the violence.
Yes, but so you are, you are starting from an empty sheet.
That's right.
Sure. You don't have any preconceived notion until you, you, you... And for example, journalists were written to as material witnesses.
Sure.
Even though they knew we were not there, because we supervised people who were there, who had footage, they thought we should be invited. Now, did you not think that the person in whose name any violence could have been perpetrated or for whose benefit could, if for nothing at all? Because opinions were also taken in this and witnesses just went to share opinions.
I think you're overstressing when you connect the violence to the candidate.
No, I'm not, I'm saying that...
The MPP candidate.
Don't misconstrue my question. I'm saying that the MPP candidate could have benefited from. Because don't forget the CORDU report that I presented to Brian Achampong in my interview did say that the low turnout could have been because of the violence. So if the violence led to a low turnout, somebody can say that the outcome of the election could have been influenced by the violence.
You could say that. So many things, the sun was shining too much and therefore there was a low turnout. You can connect it to everything.
No, but we know, we know, I mean...
I'm, I'm trying to get to a point here.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so the fact that she was not invited actually shows that the Commission was not interested in the election itself, because that has already been supervised by a competent public institution. There were only, the mandate of the Commission was to look at the violence. Who caused the violence? What were the reasons? If any of the, of the witnesses had connected the violence to the candidate, she would have been invited.
But we can't separate the violence from the election. Because the violence was in the election. So the outcome of the election could have been influenced by the violence. So we are not talking about whether she is responsible or not. But in inquiry into the violence, it is an electoral violence. The violence is described, it's not violence implicit. So the idea, that's why the EC Chairman was there.
Sure.
So the, the, the mandate is very clear, the discussions are around the election. So the centrality of the Commission, in fact, the title is the Commission of Inquiry into Ayawoso West Wagon by-election.
Violence.
Events, events, not violence. Events, which would include voter turnout, which would include conduct of election, which would include whether the paper, the ballot boxes were open, whatever, it's events.
And associated violence.
And associated violence.
Anyway, we'll take a break on that semantic disagreement. My guests are trying to plough through the work of the Commission. I like the numbers Madame Wood gave us, so 33 witnesses, 12 sittings, 65 hours, three Commissioners. We'll read your comments and also go into other issues. What could we do with the report that they would release later this week? Don't go away.
Let's take you on a journey of discovery. The incredible sights, artefacts, music and adventure. It is what makes life worth living. Our history, the arts and soul. Art and Soul with Melissa Alward, Saturdays at 8:30 AM, only on City TV. The policymakers. The top personalities. The people are the centre of the news. They speak on face to face. One of the kind access into the lives and the stories of our time.
So these are some of the things. If you want, as I was born in the plane, in the queue. Just straight from the launch to the queue, a song dropped.
Face to face with Godfred Akotobwafo, every Tuesday at 9 PM.
Welcome back to The Point of View. Tonight, we're trying to understand what work the Commission of Inquiry into the Ayawoso West Wagon of Violence has done. They finished their work on the 6th, actually on the 8th of March, International Women's Day, and they will present their report this week. My guest, Justice Remsai, private legal practitioner and also a law lecturer at Gimp... And they will present their report this week. My guest, Justice Remsai, private legal practitioner and also a law lecturer at Gimpa, which incidentally is where the executive secretary also teaches. So there's some Gimpa relation there. Or taught. We have, uh, Dr. Norman, Dr. Ismail Norman is the president of the Institute for Security and Emergency Studies. And Catherine Loyce Wood is the P R O of the Commission of Inquiry. Uh, I'm going to show you two quick, um, videos. My production team thought the appearance of Double was quite interesting. And also the IGP's appearance was quite interesting. So let's watch a quick footage and then we'll come back and discuss.
In this particular instance, we have had some high-ranked police officers, including the regional, um, commander, regional operations officer, some divisional commanders and district commanders, who have told the commission that they were not aware, first of all, of the deployment of the SWAT group of national security. They have also told the commission that even though there is evidence that the SWAT was in the constituency and patrolled for a while, it never came to their attention. You don't see any problem with that?
Yes, there is a problem. There is a problem. And, um, I am not disputing the fact that my regional commanders and others didn't know about this. I also did not know about this operation. So I side with them.
What do you think we should do as far as this is concerned?
Well, um, there's a lot of room for improvement as far as coordination and collaboration is concerned.
What were you doing prior to working with, um, national security?
Jim Abena now we here before our national security.
Nametong Mobile Phones Elseko.
I was selling mobile phones at Seiko.
Are you able to tell this commission how you got enrolled or appointed into the national security?
Let me account your commission me how I would to me back of, um, national security.
My Lord, two thousand and seventeen, and I'm a T S A, national security for a recruitment.
In two thousand and seventeen, I heard that national security was having an recruitment, recruitment in the-
And I may apply for, may, may estimate the main application query.
So I applied for the position.
Did you have to go through an interview process, for instance?
I do go through interviewer now.
Because vetting, nah, yes, I take him in fingerprint, yes, I.
I went for vetting and I was, my fingerprints were taken as well.
Isakumia? Did you go through any formal training to become a national security operative?
Go any formal training and so I, yeah, the commission, yeah.
The passion I, I call S U P A R E for three weeks.
Yes, I was trained at S U P A R E for three weeks.
So that was, uh, the first was the IGP and then of course Double. I forget his, his original name, going through a translator there. Bright Akumia, AKA Double. For those observers, Dr. Norman and Justice, watching from outside, I wasn't in a crowd, but I thought Double's appearance, apart from Samuel George, was the most popular in terms of social media and public buzz. Am I correct? A lot were interested in Double's testimony, monitoring the social, the media?
I was a little bit confused about how he got into the National Security Service.
Mm hmm.
And I was actually baffled about the length of training that he had. Three weeks of training to be entrusted with such awesome power. Uh, I was very worried about that. And so my interest in watching Double was really, um, upon discovering that Double was actually, um, prepared in a way that he was susceptible to that kind of violence.
And his testimony revealed that.
And his testimony revealed that. Because if you give me inadequate training to do something, I'm gonna mess up.
Hmm.
Unless I'm really, really gifted in what I'm doing. When you throw in anger and weapon, you are, you have just weaponized someone who is not prepared to deal with a rapidly escalating situation. So for me, I'm not making excuses for Double. But I think we also have to consider, we have to have a little bit of empathy for that gentleman, because I think that if he was properly prepared to handle rough situation, he will probably not have acted in a way that he did.
Interesting. Before I come to justice, the idea of making this public, uh, uh, Madame, did, was there any debate about this or was it clear? Because the, the, the terms of reference did not talk about public. So the commissioners decided to have all the hearings public?
I think my learned colleague will confirm that unless otherwise, in other words, the first point of reference is that it must be made public.
Unless otherwise, okay.
You know, it needs to be specifically said. So the methodology is important, the manner is important, you know, the mandate is important. And these were all, they're all given, you know, at the end of the day. So going public, it's a public hearing, it's a commission of inquiry. So at the end of the day, you know, the judicial has its, its, its line of, you know, questioning, the criminal, the civil. And then this is mostly for the public concern.
Witnesses request that their testimony be given in camera?
You know, again, back to the methodology whereby we could have it oral or we could have it written, you understand? So, you know, when it comes to the fact that what are the actual powers of the commission, you can go into subpoenas, you can go into all of that. But you know, this is one month, literally for us, very few days, almost twelve sittings only. So one doesn't want to go so deep into, let's go into the, you know, the actual facts and the actual nitty gritty. So technically, no.
Because I'm asking, because this was, you have ministers of, for example, in parliament, when we vet the Minister for National Security or when they vet, it's done in camera, the media is thrown out. So to have people of such important roles, Minister for Interior, National Security Minister, Minister of State for National Security, Director of Operations for National Security, all testifying in camera, in, 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 in open court, as it were, in, in public view. Is that, the, the, the commission, what was the thinking process?
Let, let, let's put it this way. If you look at the world and you look at countries and you look at commission of inquiries, this is laudable for the fact that a, a government, a country is happy or not happy, but is able to subject themselves to public inquiry.
Hmm.
You know, it's a demonstration of democratic transparency when you look at it that way. It's, it, it, I mean, we all know that of course commission of inquiry is, is, is a public method that the government can adopt. So when you ask yourself that question, it's like the transparency seems to be the appetite. And, and, and it's, it's-
So it was important for the public to follow for the believability of the process at the end?
Absolutely, because we, we, remember, you know, my, my friend said earlier on that, you know, uh, apportion responsibility or blame or, you know, punish, that's not really what the commission is all about. We find the facts, we state them, we put them all together, we inquire, we find all the people. It's almost a collation and collection process.
Hmm.
And then the, the, the skill of the commissioners, remember they are judges and they will, they will speak to us through their report, through their recommendations, mostly about what do we do for change, what do we do to act on?
One of the things which is very loud in your terms of reference is what is not there. I don't see anything about recommend or appropriate punishment
Hmm.
for anybody found culpable of anything. You are supposed to make a full and favorable inquiry into the event, identify the persons who are involved, inquire into the matter, into what you consider incidental or reasonably related, submit a report. There's nothing, Justice, am I wrong with that? It's very loud in the absence of saying recommend sanctions or something. There's nothing like that.
Because the constitution already provides sanctions for persons whom you found, you know, liable in this situation. For example, if you are found liable and you are unable to set it aside, you know,
Within the six months.
within the period, it becomes a judgment. And that means that if you go to some part of the constitution which talks about qualification to be, to hold certain public offices.
Hmm.
It specifically says that persons who have been found guilty or liable by a commission of inquiry cannot, you know, aspire to such offices for a period of ten years. So those are, those punishments are already provided elsewhere in the constitution. So even without expressly saying it.
It's implied.
Once they find the person responsible and they say you are liable for this, it's implied that this punishment is upon you.
So, okay, clear for us this idea that findings of a commission of inquiry cannot be used in a court of law. What is that?
Okay, I think the, 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 the claim is that findings of commissions of inquiry cannot be used as evidence to prosecute, and not that it cannot be used in the court of law, but to, to, to use in the court of law to prosecute persons who went before the commission to testify. And the school of thought, you know, come from this point of view that when people come to commissions of inquiry, the essence is for them to be as open, frank and honest as possible. Therefore, they require some kind of, you know, uh, immunity to be able to do that. Otherwise, it becomes self-incrimination for me to come and say things that will incriminate me in, in the belief that I'm being honest and faithful. So if they are coming because of this reason, then it would be unfair and prejudicial and actually injustice to use evidence that they have given with the belief that they are not supposed to be punished against them in a criminal trial.
Hmm.
So that is it. That is the school of thought. Um, it's, it's been pronounced upon somehow by a high court, but that case was never appealed on so many grounds. And there are so many questions about the authority, how authoritative that decision is. But it's a very strong school of thought and it's not just in Ghana. If you go through the Commonwealth, it is something that they do even in England when they set up a commission of inquiry. The purpose is not to use the evidence.
But some people feel that then if a government has a scandal that it wants to protect its people, it's set up a commission of inquiry, they come and testify, they admit whatever they want to admit. But then the evidence they so submit cannot then be used to prosecute them. So they find immunity by setting up and participating in.
Yes, that is because, you see, it's a choice a government needs to make. And that is, that power has been given to, you know, the president to decide whether I am going to look just at, uh, the tiny aspects of the thing by prosecuting some people or I want to look at the systemic, you know, look at the whole system and correct it for the future people. Because when you go through prosecution, trust me, you are not going to change anything apart from jailing some one or two, three people.
Hmm.
But the problem is of which is the systemic, what is causing the problem may not be found through prosecution. So it is only commission of inquiry that, so for example, now so many things have come to the fore. For example, now we know that the national security coordinator is now armed. There is a whole armory and there are security people who have guns. And if I contrary to the view that civilians who are working with the national security coordinator should not be armed, at least we know that one person has been able to take arms and use, which is, uh, uh, is it Double?
Mm hmm.
You know, so this should tell us something that there is a problem at that national security secretary. And I have no doubt in my mind that, oh, let me put it this way, in a very moderate way. I believe that, uh, it is possible for the commission to make a recommendation for disarmament of, of the national security.
Something like that.
Because, you know, at the point when I was following the proceedings, um, the former IGP, the commissioner, asked the CID, um, the, the, um, IGP, that when they were on the National Security Commission, he couldn't remember, so he was asking for confirmation, was it the case that we had an armory and a stationed, you know, SWAT police team?
So I, did the national security have a standing force on its own, not working with the police?
And then the answer from the IGP, who was then the CID boss on the, uh, council, the national security council was to the, I mean, said no. So it looks like it's something that-
It's novell to, even the, the two of them?
The two of them.
Hmm.
You know, so that should tell you something. And, and we know the position of the law. The constitution makes it clear that to have a, a police force or an armed force, um, you should seek, you know, it should be done through an act of parliament.
Hmm.
It cannot be implied that when we say do extend, you incidentally, you know, set up a force. Because if you do so, you may not know, I mean, maybe today we have nice gentlemen who measure their power.
Hmm.
So they may just say maybe, how many? Thirty-five armed men. There may be another person tomorrow who may set up and have five thousand armed men.
Saying that the national security having a standing force which is armed is illegal?
That is my belief. I, and, and I am speaking to this not the first time. I have written and I've done some research on this.
Hmm.
I strongly believe from my research and my, and my discussion with the people that look, the, 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 the law provides for a secondment. That secondment does not give the national security coordinator a full command over that. So because it's, you see, the National Security Council is supposed to coordinate the activities of all the security and intelligence agents.
Not have its own operation. Dr. Norman, what are your thoughts on, it appears there were a lot of knocking of heads. Because don't forget, in the Brian, in some point interview, I was trying to ascertain whether the police were aware of what was happening with the men in black who were armed. And then when we played the voice of, uh, the police director of operations, he said, no, you are misinterpreting his voice. So it looks like the issue of whether the police were working with the national security, whether they were working alone was quite key. From a security point of view, what do you, what did you learn or gain from the, the, the public hearings?
Hmm. I think one of the beneficial effects of this commission is the fact that we for now gotten to know that we have a multi-tier police system.
Hmm.
The national security does not have to work with the police. Because the national security is supposed to carry out if-stropping, surveillance, investigations, high-level policing.
Hmm.
And the police is not. It's like the FBI and state police.
Hmm.
If I, I, I may say that in, in the United States. The FBI is not accountable to the police. So the national security is not accountable to the Ghana police. So national security, oh, no, they, they can, from the security point of view, the architecture of national security is very different from, from police. And, and, and so they're supposed to be superior force to the police. And the police is supposed to deal with law and order, municipal police, policing and so on and so forth, crime and peace maintenance. So national security mandate, we need to look at the mandate. If the law setting up the national security mandated it to do the things that it's doing, then I think it's within its purview.
Hmm.
So before we can actually carry on intelligent discussion about this, is to look at the laws surrounding the creation of the national security apparatus. If you take the FBI, CIA, CIA is not accountable to the FBI. Ghana Army is not accountable to Ghana police. Military systems are very different, the police is different, national security is different. I do not know under which-
Are you stating this as a way of norm or based on Ghana law?
Uh, this is why I'm saying that we need to see the architecture, the legal framework.
Quickly on that, you don't, you don't agree?
I perfectly understand what, um, um, Dr. Norman is saying. That is what applies. But I think there are some, um, comparisons that do not reflect what the state of the law here is. So the National Security Council was actually established by the constitution. And when you look at the functions, it functions to assemble all the security agencies and then form these nucleus around which they will coordinate activities. It is desirable maybe that you have a national security, you know, system that supersede the police on everything, which should be the case, but the state of the law as it is now, okay, only gives the National Security Council a coordination rule. Now, what that means is that in fact, it actually states in the act that it shall not, you know, arm itself and then the law prevents all these other armed things. So if, if we want to form a national security that will be in the form of, you see, our FBI actually is the BNI.
Mm hmm.
They gather intelligence. They have powers expressly given to them to do that. Then our CIE actually is the, uh, uh, the, the research department of the foreign affairs. You know, so we have this parallel, yeah, that, that's the research department, which gather foreign intelligence. And that is what the act is said. So we have the internal intelligence agency, which is the BNI, and then we have the external intelligence agency, which is the foreign.
So what is our national security in the architecture? What is equivalent in the US?
It, yeah, there's a national security council in the US as well and also in so many countries. But they do not provide, they do not, uh, that is like, uh, is a governing body of all the security and intelligence agents. So we are not the first country to have a national security council. US has it, so many, about over a hundred countries have it, and none of them play the role of operational, tactical operation. It is a policy base, you know, with the president chairing and all the heads of the security and intelligence agencies being part. So even looking at the composition, it tells you that it's a policy level and not tactical operational level thing. Now, the secretary, which is now the issue we are discussing. is merely to, because of course, if you have that policy body, the council, you need a secretary to coordinate its activities. So as I'm talking, in fact, there are advanced, and I know of some of my colleagues who are actually preparing to go to court on this issue that, look.
Really?
If you want to set up a tactical operational national security, nothing prevents, you can make, you can pass an act of parliament to do that. But the current dispensation does not allow you to do what you are doing.
And the commission has revealed that this happened.
This is what happened.
We'll take another quick break. This is the point of view. We're trying to understand what happened with the Ayewasoweswagun by election commission of inquiry. When we come back, we read your messages and also answer the question, what can we do with the findings? Stay tuned.
For regular news checks as they unfold. 2020 news, all day, all the time. Politics, sports, entertainment, business and more. 2020 news, we bring you the world in 20 minutes.
Keep watching Breakfast Daily on City TV.
You're tuned into Breakfast Daily on City TV.
You're watching Breakfast Daily on City TV.
We spice up your mornings with culturally enriched conversations, social interviews and policy-oriented discussions that will keep you updated on the progress of the nation. Let your voice be heard with the hashtag Breakfast Daily.
Nigerians are putting their film on Netflix now. There's DSTV, there's mobile phones, there's all sorts of apps that you can actually put your phone. So distribution is not just going to the cinemas to, to, to preview or to premiere the movie. We wear all our gowns and all that and then that's all. There are lots of channels that we don't know and we've limited ourselves to just Ghana.
Join us for Breakfast Daily, only on City TV. Join the Breakfast Daily team Monday through Fridays from 7:30 AM to 10.
Welcome back. Here are some of your comments on the point of view tonight. Nitefuni Kwezingkromalumumba says, can this commission report escape outside force of influence? Wouldn't they be given directives from the government as to how to report to the public? Is the question he's asking on Facebook. Ayub Atanku says, why are we bringing the US into this matter? Don't we have senior lawyers and judges who have the brains to create our own security institutions? That's Ayub Atanku's view. More comments. Paul Kofin Yami says, I pray the commission will be able to take out the few truthful voices from the mini lies. May God be their help. Henry Amelika says, nice show, I'm really enjoying the conversation. Kabna Rafael says, I'm following keenly, especially having my one-time lecturer, Dr. Ishmael Norman on the panel. And Alessan Aaron, you didn't tell me you were a one-time lecturer. Do you still teach though?
Yes.
What do you teach? Security or what?
Another thing.
Another thing, I like that. Alessan Aaron says, the MVP candidate then should have been invited by the commission. I don't see any tangible reason why she was not invited. Quickly, Justice, who was the most important witness for you of the 33?
I think the most important witness was Sam George.
Samor George?
Because he was there, he lived the situation. And if you observe the proceedings, it was from Samor George that the event of the day took shape. He gave the account of how it started and how it ended. And it was Samor George's account that brought in Double. That brought the media, particularly your video and everything in. It was his account that actually led to, I mean, what, his account was key in the locals' include as a visitation. Because, you know, when I followed the visitation, I realized that almost all the questions that they were asking were questions that came from, were issues that came from Samor George's testimony.
So he was the main witness?
I think he was the single most decisive, you know, witness for, for the, for the commission.
Interesting. When are they presenting their report, madam?
As soon as possible. As quickly as possible. You know, as I said, and you know, the amount of work that is going to go into this. What we literally saw, though it looks so great, is almost like the tip of a iceberg. The amount of behind-the-scenes work that is going on. And remember, you know, we were talking during the break about how it's important to ensure that, do we have a fool? Do we have a faithful and an impartial, you know, and, and everything to do with the mandate? Are we able to say that the recommendations that come out of this report are indeed thorough, robust?
So when?
So it's coming.
Why?
Quicker than normal.
Why, why did you invite Paul Adomotri?
Oh, no, it's part of the media.
He felt, I, I, I watched this. He was, he went up before me and I thought the, the commission either, the commissioners did not understand why he was there or they didn't see the use for him being there because he wasn't asked any question.
You were there?
Yes, that's what I'm asking. So I'm, I'm, I'm presenting this. You base on my observation of how he was treated. It seemed as if he, he wasn't wanted by the commission, although he was invited.
Everybody has to come up and give evidence, you know, like you said, to the day, to the cause, to the leader.
So how come, how come he wasn't asking any question about his views about vigilantism? Although Evans was asked, but Paul wasn't asking any question?
One, one may ask, but at the end of the day, you know, I know, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, remember that the commissioners are going, they, they are going in a line that has everything to do with being impartial. So I am quite.
Were they running out of time? Did they, because, I mean, I'm just asking. It seemed very odd for a journalist who was invited to come and testify and the letter was very clear, as a material witness, only to be essentially dismissed after five minutes because he wasn't there. And the commission knew he wasn't there before he was invited.
Remember very carefully, if you, obviously, we haven't got time. One of the key issues was, have you got anything for which we can speak to? And if you remember, the commissioner, Madame Professor Henrietta, said, oh, what a shame, you haven't got any evidence that I can work with. And Commissioner, the chairman, Justice Emil Short, said, I really wish you had something that we could speak to.
But I'll submit that before closing the.
And so then he said, why don't you go and submit? And then let's see whether we can recall. Check it out, it was clear.
I see.
You know, so we were dealing with this.
Gentlemen, that there seemed to be a bit of a rush. I, I, it seemed, I mean, I felt just watching that they really wanted to stick to the one-month sort of timeline.
Yeah, I think even the chairman of the commission made that point when some of the questions or some of the demands from the council for some of the, yeah. They made a point that, look, we wish you could do all that you want us to do, but the fact is we don't have time and we need to work within the one month. Even though I believe that the commission could have asked for an extension, just like all the other commissions that we, we have seen in the past have been doing. Because some of the things were just so important that it will be, will be difficult to ignore them. But then again, you can never finish some of these things. So at least their report may serve as the starting point of further inquiry, not necessarily in the form of commission of inquiry, but also maybe in form of other research or other, what do we call it? Other ways of inquiry, investigations. So I believe, I mean, well, let's see what they found. Because truth is, sometimes when you sit on the side, you know, in the audience, you see something different. But when you are in the game, what you see is also because they've seen a lot of reports that we have not seen, written documents that we have not had access to.
Dr. Norman, what do you think would be the most important thing this commission would have served? Even before their recommendations?
To show to every Ghanaian that we are all together in this and that we need to work together as a group. And we should not let politicians divide us. Because it seems to be a little bit too divisive. And in terms of whether or not they should have asked for more time, I, I think they have reached saturation point. Because the witnesses were repeating themselves.
Okay, so they had enough information?
They had enough.
So in the very shortest time, we'll have the report.
Oh, no, absolutely. And there will be a handover ceremony.
You can't say by tomorrow?
It's difficult to say because they are working, they are literally on lockdown now.
Brilliant.
It's gonna come out really quickly.
Thank you. Catherine Lawsewood is the PRO of the Ayewasoweswagun Commission of Inquiry. Justice Swam Sai is a private legal practitioner and a law lecturer at Gimpa. And Dr. Ishmael Norman is president of the Institute of Security and Emergency Studies. Thank you for watching The Point of View. Stay with City TV, join our heritage month. There's a lot of great programs coming up. My name is Ben Aravle, good night.